Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last meeting of the Board of Education for me, for me, for this year as the president. So, good evening and welcome to our Board of Education meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We apologize for starting later than we normally would. This is the combined regular agenda and business meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education, notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of five hundred North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everyone present here at School Fifty-One and our television viewers to our December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Meeting of the Board of Education. We're here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education Permanent Records, so that recording will adequately reflect the proceedings. Please refrain from talking while other people are speaking. There will be a public portion of the citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion must personally sign in prior to the start of the public participation portion, so that they may have an opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and reason that the person wants to comment, whether it be an agenda item or general education comment. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us for the Elizabeth Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in Elizabeth Public Schools. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa, Carvalho.
Here.
Chevrez, Jacobs, Marina Ortega.
What did I say?
Neron.
Here.
Concavas Pastana. Rivera.
Here.
Baffles.
Here, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence for Richard Gary, a former Elizabeth Police Officer and former Elizabeth Board of Education attendance officer. Thank you. Please remain standing as we have our William F. Halsey, Junior Health and Public Safety Academy Junior ROTC, lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance of Colors. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have Board Member Isaiah Rivera lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner by Francis Scott Key. Thank you to our students from Halsey, Junior ROTC. Please remain standing as I ask Board Member Stephanie Pastana to lead us in the Pledge of Ethics.
As a member of Elizabeth Public Schools' professional learning community, I will keep people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place. There's no disrespect when someone else is speaking, my pain, close attention, and not to rotted. Speaking in calm voice and using proper language, dressing hopefully for teaching and learning, inspiring, adjusting myself and others by celebrating successes and learning mistakes, care about others by demonstrating kindness, kindness, and being like a home owner by teaching every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you, may be seated. I will now have our Superintendent of Schools introduce our student representative.
Thank you, Madam President. Maya Sofia Matos is an outstanding leader who has made a remarkable impact as the Student Government President at Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy. Her leadership skills shine through in her dedication to serving her peers, organizing events, and promoting a positive school culture. Beyond her role in student government, Maya is also an active member of the Interact Club, where she volunteers for community events, demonstrating her commitment to service. With exceptional grades and consistent placement on the honor roll, Maya excels academically while tackling the challenges of rigorous AP courses, including AP Biology and AP Literature that she is taking this school year in preparation for college. Maya's exemplary work ethic, passion for helping others, and ability to inspire those around her make her a true role model and an invaluable asset to our school community. It is my pleasure to introduce Maya Matos, please.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, can you please add our student representative to the attendance, please?
Yes, duly noted.
Thank you. At this time, microphones are open for public comments to those who have signed in prior to the session. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address the Board individually. Each speaker shall comply with the respects with Board Policy nine-three-two-two. The following rules shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals or naming of individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the Board no more than once during a meeting, and comments will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. Mr. Kennedy?
We have no, um, no one has signed up for public speaking this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I close public comments for the meeting. Thank you. What a nice last meeting. All right, on to next business. So, on January fourth, I was nominated and selected to be the Board President of, for two thousand and twenty-four, and I immediately set the course for that year with an ambitious initiative that could promote teamwork, leadership, and unity. And over the past twelve months, the Board and the district have worked closely under my leadership and guidance to ensure that our schools and administrative departments were operating efficiently and effectively while providing our students with high-quality education and the opportunity for them to pursue their dreams. Let's take a look at our final Spotlight Video of the Year, highlighting the members of the Board in the past year that has led to a successful year for our Elizabeth Public Schools.
Greetings, Elizabeth Public Schools' Learning Community. I am Charlene Baffles, and it has been an honor and privilege to serve as this year's Board President of the Elizabeth Board of Education for the second time. Each year presents a unique story as the incoming Board President begins a twelve-month journey adopting policies and supporting the learning community to ensure students are receiving a high-quality education. This year, as Board President, I wanted to tell a story about leadership, teamwork, engagement, and equity. Our tale began on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, moments after I was selected by my colleagues to serve as this year's Board President. It was important to me to set the tone for the next twelve months, to present an initiative for the year. As you can see up here today, green is a color of freshness and hope, and it is often used to symbolize rebirth and renewal. Learn en fe la force, there's strength and unity. My hope this year is for us to unite as a team with each Board Member contributing to a specific initiative throughout the year. Let's make it truly remarkable through our teamwork and unwavering commitment to respect, communication, and transparency. Again, thank you for all of your enduring support. Let's continue to move forward, and God bless you all. With my initial initiative set, new chapters would be revealed in the months ahead, with each Board Member taking the spotlight by sponsoring an initiative of their own. Partnerships were formed and strengthened with various organizations, including the Elizabeth Police Department, the Elizabeth Fire Department, the Elizabeth EMS, the Monique Burr Foundation, and Goya Foods to help give every student every opportunity to succeed. Board Vice President Stanley Neron sponsored National Mentoring Month in January. Board Member Jerry Jacobs sponsored Black History Month in February. Board Member Maria Carvalho sponsored Women's History Month in March. Board Member Iliana Chevrez sponsored Autism Awareness Month in April. Board Member Rosa Marina Ortega sponsored Teacher Appreciation Week in May. Board Member Diane Barbosa sponsored Self-Care Awareness Month in September. Board Member Isaiah Rivera sponsored Diversity and Inclusion through Hispanic Heritage Month in October. Board Member Stephanie Concavas Pastana sponsored World Kindness Day in November. As we reach the end of the year and conclude this year's story during the season of giving, I would like to offer my gratitude and appreciation to my colleagues on the Board for their teamwork, engagement, unity, and all their efforts throughout this year, as well as the Elizabeth Public Schools' Learning Community and the greater Elizabeth community for your unwavering support. Today is your good day, and there are many, many more good days to come, and I wish you the very best in all of them. And remember, every day can be a good day if you make it. Thank you for all that you do to make Elizabeth Public Schools a special place. Although this year's story has come to an end, I know there are many great stories waiting for us to live and tell, starting now. Let's make today a good day. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, thank you. First off, I just want to thank IT for helping with the video. I know it was a lot this entire year, but thank you so much, especially to Ray and Jason for helping with that video. I just have a few more words of thanks that I want to give as this is my last Board meeting, and then you won't hear from me again. So, please bear with me as I, uh, share my final words, because I will not be a president again. Sorry, my phone's not bright, okay, there we go. So, uh, every story has its turning points. Moments that challenge you, stretch you, and force you to rise higher than you ever thought you could. This year has been one of those stories for me, but through it all... I'm sorry, because I know I'm reading this, but a lot has happened in my life this year. And the last time that I served as President, my father passed away. And this time I served as President, a lot has happened in my personal life that I just cannot divulge, but it has been a very trying time for me, even with the smiles. People don't understand how much I've gone through this year. But through it all, I've been reminded that my growth didn't happen in my comfort, and that strength isn't just built with ease. Serving as President of the Board of Education this year was never a role that I took lightly. It comes with weight and pressure and the knowledge that every decision is being watched very closely. To my fellow Board Members, thank you for standing with me and pushing forward, even when it wasn't easy, and for leading with intention. Every initiative you took on this year reflected your heart, your service, and your belief in the power of education. But together, we show that leadership is not in the title, it's in action. To our teachers, administrators, our support staff, the business office, you are all the foundation of everything that we do here in Elizabeth. We face challenges head-on, and every single day, you still show up with a heart and patience for our students. Your impact goes beyond academics, and you are a part of the story that I hope you will never forget how important that is. To the parents, guardians, and our community members, thank you for your trust and your patience and your partnership. We felt your support and we heard your voices because of you that we continue to push to be better. To our students, you are my greatest motivation. Everything that we do, every plan that we put in place, every goal is set because of you. And like I stated before, this year was not easy, especially for me. And I know that a lot of times our students may feel the same way, because everyone expects so much from you. And my hope is for our students that no matter how heavy life feels, to keep pushing and to know that you are stronger than you know, and every hard chapter is shaping you for something much greater. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank our Superintendent Olga Hugemeyer. From the moment that I stepped into this role, she has been a trusted partner, a sounding board, and a collaborator in every sense. Your commitment to excellence and your unwavering focus on what's best for our students have been a driving force behind much of our success, so thank you. I want to also recognize our district attorneys, our district supervisors, our district directors, our staff, our IT staff, everyone who comes to the meetings every month. Your hard work happens behind the scenes, but your impact is seen and felt throughout our school district every day. Your dedication makes everything that we do possible, and I'm grateful for each and every one of you. And lastly, I want to personally thank Stan for embodying the true meaning of what a Vice President should be. Your unwavering support and steady presence has been a constant strength, a source of strength for me. Leading this district to new heights was not easy, but knowing that I have a friend and an ally like you by my side made it very different. Our friendship runs deep, and this year became even more clear that your true leadership is not about standing in front, but it's about standing together. So, thank you for standing with me. The story that we've written together is one that I will never forget. It's a story about perseverance, about courage, and about faith. And while this chapter is closing, the next one is already waiting to begin. There are more goals to achieve, more partnerships to build, and more opportunities to create for every student here in Elizabeth. And as we turn the page, I leave you with this. Pressure can break you, but it can also build you. And every step forward, no matter what, and no matter how small it feels, that's what counts. So, let's keep pushing forward together, and let's keep writing, and let's make every day a good day. Thank you for your trust, your patience, and your belief in what's possible, and thank you for being part of my story. Thank you, and God bless.
Madam President.
Yes.
I would like to, I would like to take this moment to spread my sincere gratitude to you. Your leadership during this year, uh, it was amazing. Your hard work and dedication, and you changed our lives with your new initiative, and you permitted us to be us inside our district. It was a pleasure to work with you. You are a great leader, and, and I really enjoyed this year. And as a Board Member, we have ups and downs. Sometime, we respectfully disagree because we family and everybody, so every family sometime respectfully disagree, but you know, we love you. And everything, meeting sometimes, celebrate our student, perform in a different way, and pushing us to complete and achieve our goals. I owe my respect for you, and I wish the best.
Madam President. Madam President, um, wow, that was, that's tough to follow, to comment and really speak on, but, um, I respect you, I love you, and I'm very proud to call you our leader, our president, and somebody who has paved the way for all of us sitting here today and opened the doors for us to be able to do what we do. And, um, you know, there's a saying that says, "You don't look like what you've been through." And today, you're glowing, you're shining, and we're so proud of you, and so is our district. Our district doesn't look like what it's been through, and it's glowing and it's shining, and it's, uh, because of the leadership that, um, you excelled and you've created these huge shoes for us to fill. So, um, you know, needless to say, we're very nervous about that part, but, um, excited about the future and still having you, um, as a guiding light for all of us is, um, is huge. And, um, you know, thank you for always keeping us in line, straight, and making sure that we have this amazing surround sound, that we can hear everything now. I can hear my every thought. IT is, um, definitely, um, going over and beyond for you. So, uh, IT, let's give IT a big round of applause. I had to do that because IT been, you know, you've been beating IT up all year, but they're doing really good, you know? But, um, just thank you, and we can't thank you enough. And, you know, it's, it's a challenge, because, you know, a lot of people see us up here and they think that, um, we make a whole lot of money being on the Board of Education, and, you know, really, it's, um, that's not the story at all. You know, we volunteer our time, and we put forth the effort to really believe in everybody up here, including yourself, especially the President and the Superintendent. They sit and they strategize, and they support our directors and the vision of a district, and it's not easy. So, we empathize with you, and we salute you, and we're still going to stand with you, we're always going to stand with you, and thank you.
Thank you so much, I know the tears are good, we're good now. All right, back to business. All right, at this time, our Superintendent of School will present our community updates.
Madam President, if I may, before I present the community updates, I also would like to congratulate you on a very successful year. You have put your personal touch on every aspect of a Board meeting, of every aspect of developing the agenda, your commitment to the children, your interest in ensuring that our children are learning, are thriving. Of many conversations with regard to the performance of our schools, the successful committee meetings throughout the course of this year that have been conducted under your leadership. It has been an honor to work with you. So, our announcements for the month of December. We begin with a reminder to all of our families with regard to the fact that our schools will be closing for the Christmas and New Year's recess at regular time tomorrow, Friday, December twentieth, and then schools will be reopening once again on Thursday, January second. We next turn to our Inside EPS, our news from Central. Thank you. First, we would like to begin with honoring, uh, one of our Dwyer Academy students. So, John E. Dwyer, Technology Academy Senior. Kamala Clayton has been awarded a full scholarship to the University of Notre Dame through the two thousand and twenty-four Questbridge National College Match, a national program that connects high-achieving high school seniors from low-income backgrounds with full four-year scholarships to fifty-two of the nation's top colleges. Clayton was among two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven seniors of the class of two thousand and twenty-five from throughout the nation who were recognized as match scholarship recipients. The process included the selection of seven thousand two hundred and eighty-eight finalists among more than twenty-five thousand five hundred applicants to be considered for the Questbridge National College Match Scholarship. Digest that for a moment. Outstanding, outstanding. She is currently the number-one-ranked student of Dwyer Technology Academy's Class of two thousand and twenty-five with a four-point-eight GPA and has earned the AP Scholar with Honor Award from the College Board by attaining an average score of at least three-point-two-five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more exams. Very, very accomplished young lady. We're very, very proud of her achievements. And next, we would like to turn to our International We Love You Foundation. On December eleventh, the International We Love You Foundation gifted winter coats to students at Jerome Dunn Academy School Number Nine. For a happier and healthier society, the International We Love You Foundation promotes unity and friendship among all people of the global village, beyond nationality, beyond race, religion, and socioeconomic status, through impactful environmental and community-centered initiatives, carried out with their motto, "The Heart of a Mother." During the fall, the Foundation collected new winter coats for children ages five through ten to support children in undersourced communities in Massachusetts, in New Jersey, in Washington, DC, and beyond. Impactful work that they are doing and the number of volunteers that contribute their time to ensuring that they are providing children with what it is that they need. It was really a beautiful, beautiful morning. We had the opportunity to speak to the International We Love You Foundation and very impressed with their, with the work that they're conducting. Next, we would like to turn to Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy Construction Technology Students who were honored at a celebratory luncheon provided by Habitat for Humanity at the Salvation Army in Elizabeth. Habitat for Humanity recognized the students for the food pantry renovations they performed at the Salvation Army that included installing and spackling drywall, hanging new doors, priming and painting the ceilings, the walls, the doors, and the trim, showcasing, um, their skill sets. Just wonderful and nice to see that they were honored for their hard work and demonstration of the skills that they are learning while at Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy. Next slide, please. And next, we would like to be able to, uh, recognize a, our partnership with Montclair State University for Friends Day. For over ten years, Montclair State University has hosted Friends Day where over a hundred children with disabilities ages five to twenty-one are invited to explore the school's Student Recreational Center. REC Board, a student-led organization sponsored by the Department of Campus Recreation, plans to fun-filled day of activities for the children with games, arts, crafts, swimming, basketball, and dancing. And each child is paired with two college buddies to accompany them through their session. The department's professional staff members oversaw a smooth execution of the day's events. And I just have to thank, um, Delilah Sosa in our office because, um, her daughter is currently a student at Montclair State University. And really, it was through her efforts that she brought the awareness of this opportunity to participate. And our children and staff from School Number Twenty-Seven had an incredible time, and this is an initiative that will be expanded in years to come, so very, very grateful. Next slide, please. And next, we continue on with the Elizabeth Public Schools, uh, Physical Education Department. Our very own Joe Prisatula, Supervisor of Physical Education and Health, uh, brought this new partnership with the New Jersey State Police, the New Jersey Drive Event. The New Jersey State Police, uh, program, it's an interactive program that educates teens about the dangers of driving under the influence. The program consists of a classroom presentation, a practi- practical exercise using golf carts and fatal vision goggles to simulate the effects of alcohol on vision and reaction time while operating a vehicle, um, and instruction on the graduate driver's license as well. We had twelfth-grade students, our seniors who participated, um, that had, those who had completed their tenth-grade driver education course and also currently, um, held a student driver permit were selected to be able to participate in this very, very, um, important, um, initiative which brought tremendous awareness with regard to the dangers of driving under the influence. Next slide, please. And, uh, actually, we just, this is, uh, Mr. Kennedy, breaking news, we just received this today, in fact. Uh, for the first time in the fourteen-year history of NAF, the National Academy Foundation at Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy, the Dwyer NAF Academy of Information Technology has reached Model Distinguished Status. This is a significant milestone that will shape the future of Dwyer Technology Academy. At the 2025 NAF Next Conference, Dwyer Technology Academy will be recognized for this achievement, paving the way for even greater success. And additionally, Dwyer's NAF Academy of Information Technology will go under review for distinguished status by NAF during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, further growing its position as a leader in NAF. Tremendous hard work, Dr. Sedenya, would you agree, underway at Dwyer Academy. Very, very proud. And next slide, please. And of course, this is my, um, monthly reminder on the importance of health. Protect your health. Uh, we have, this is the season of influenza and RSV, so we are, uh, reminding our families that there are various resources in our community, uh, that are available on our district website that offer information with regard to identifying those symptoms, the steps that, uh, everyone can take to protect themselves from these illnesses, and of course, the resources are located at the top of our resource page on our district webpage. And this completes our, uh, next slide, please. Merry Christmas to everyone, happy holidays, and a special thank you to all of our schools. Um, amazing, uh, month with all of the celebrations, all of the activities. Also want to thank them for all of their contributions to our front lobby of the Mitchell Building. It is quite the experience to walk through with all of the creativity exhibited by every single school. Wishing everyone a happy and healthy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions? Okay, we'll go through our agenda at this time. At this time, um, are there any questions for Tab One A, Official and Private Minutes from November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab One B, Treasurers and Secretaries Report from October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Three, Tuitions Report? Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Four A, Considerations Superintendent Report? Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Four B, Superintendent's Report, Use of Facilities? Seeing none, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Four B B, Supplementary Superintendent Report, Use of Facilities with Considerations? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Four C, Superintendent's Field Trip Considerations? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. At this time, I'm gonna ask our Superintendent to give a, um, later, okay?
To the end of the, thank you.
Tab Four B will be on the table.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any questions for Tab Five, Authorizations Report? Are there any questions for Tab Five, Authorizations Report? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the, are there any questions for Tab Six, Finance and Accounting Report? Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Six A, Transfer of Funds? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any tab questions, excuse me, are there any questions for Tab Seven, Award or Contracts Report? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have our committee chairpersons read their reports. I'm gonna have the chairpersons to just read the report, and please do not read the attendees. At this time, I'm gonna have our Education Management Committee Chair, Stephanie Pastana Concalves, read her report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Educational Management Committee was provided with, with an overview of Power School Analytics and Insight Software Program that was purchased with the SRF federal funding for the purpose of easily tracking student, school, and district performance metrics. The superintendent presented the twenty-three, twenty-four Accountability Profiles, and the committee discussed academic progress, English language proficiency, and graduation rates. The committee also reviewed the chronic absenteeism rates and the parent survey. Lastly, the committee reviewed and discussed the proposed agenda for the Professional Development Day scheduled for Friday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The agenda included a rich discussion of the, of the New Jersey student learning standards and a focus on literacy and mathematics across the curriculum. That concludes our report.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna have, um, Board Member Azazel Rivera complete the su- the Special Education Committee Report on behalf of the Chairperson, Eliana Chavras.
Thank you. So, we met on December fifth of two thousand twenty-four, and in Special Education, we discussed topics of interest in the upcoming parent workshops. Access to resources from community providers on our district webpage under the Division of Special Services was reviewed and discussed. The discussion also included the current outreach strategy implemented to communicate with parent. The Special Education Committee discussed the CPAC plans for the current school year. CPAC meetings were held on September twenty-fifth and October twenty-third. Topics of interest are being collected for the next workshop that will take place in January. A report was provided to the committee regarding extracurricular activities for our special needs students that include, that included Saturday, Saturday bowling clinics, soccer, athletic clinics, recreation programs, and Special Olympics. In addition, for after-school programs, students are afforded the opportunity to participate in the CTE work-based learning and tutoring programs, multilingual achievement programs, K-three POE programs, Best of World programs, and the K-to-twelve academic program. The committee also reviewed, also received information regarding the upcoming holiday celebration that included World Autism Month in April and Exceptional Children's Week that also takes place in April. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna have, um, the Chairperson for the Financing and Accounting Committee, uh, Board Member Jerry Jacobs, do his report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Mr. John Swisher of Suppley and Clooney presented the preliminary results of the audit for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four financial statements. Mr. Swisher reported that the district's financial statements barely stated and that an unmodified opinion will be contained within the report. He also reported that there will be no current or repeat audit findings contained in the Auditor's Management Report. Finally, Mr. Swisher noted that the balances of restricted reserves for capital and maintenance, which supported the district's ability to take care of its thirty-plus facilities. A full panel of presentation of the audit results will be presented at the January Board Meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And last report, I'm gonna ask our Board Vice President to give his report for the Legal Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Legal Committee met on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The committee discussed the outcomes of the arbitration, um, hearings held with PERC on December eleventh, and the committee was also briefed by the Superintendent School Business Administrator on, uh, several pending legal matters. And I'm just wanna thank the committee for their dedication for this year, and, um, you know, wanna create the continuum moving into two thousand twenty-five. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And again, thank you to all of my chairpersons, uh, for your commitment this year and all that you did on the committees, but as all, as well, I wanna thank our board members for your commitment on all of the committees as well. Next tab, Tab Nine, Our Claims List. Are there any questions for our claims list? Are there any questions for Tab Nine for the Claims List? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. For the resolutions for, I just wanna recognize, uh, Resolution Ten, School Board Recognition Month will be in January, and Ten A is the Martin Luther King Junior Resolution. Um, at this time, I would like to have, are there any questions for Tab Ten through Tab Ten I? Are there any questions for Tab Ten to Ten I? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Thank you for making my last meeting very easy. No issues, no questions, great. Directors, I'm sorry you had to come here tonight, but it was an easy night, right? So, oh, yes. Oh, I did, I, oh, I didn't, I wasn't following my thing, I'm so used to it, I apologize. We're gonna go back to Tab A, Eight, and we're gonna have our student representative give her reports. Maya, Ms. Maya Manta, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Hugelmeier, members of the Board of Education and esteemed community members. My name is Mia Mattos, and I'm honored to serve as their Student Representative for Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy for the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five academic year. As said in my introduction, I am Hamilton's President of Student Government, which allows me to be deeply involved in the activities and events at our school. We began the school year with our annual Back to School Night, where parents were welcomed with refreshments and guided through their children's classrooms. It was a wonderful and successful evening full of excitement and engagement. This fall, Hamilton Academy also celebrated our SEL Week of Respect, during which students participated in an assembly focused on the importance of respect and community. This year, our school is placing a strong emphasis on fostering collaboration between clubs and activities to build a sense of community and create exciting new events for our students. The partnership between clubs has sparked a flow of creative ideas. For example, in October, the Student Government and Multicultural Club collabed to sponsor a Glow Dance, which was a huge success and a great way to what promises to be an exciting year of collaboration. Looking ahead, we are eagerly preparing for our annual Black History Month Show, where students from all backgrounds come together to create a performance that celebrates and educates others about black culture. Our students are working tirelessly to bring together dance, poetry, and other forms of art and appreciation of these important contributions. Additionally, our New Jersey Future Educators Association Club is spreading holiday cheer by reading Christmas stories to children at School Twenty-Seven this week. This initiative allows our members to connect with younger students while also gaining valuable hands-on experience in the field of education. Other schools in our district have also been busy. J. Christian Bullwich Finance Academy students recently have been, visited Trinidad's Regional Medical Center, where they made and distributed cards for cancer, cancer patients, an act of kindness that was even recognized by local news. JBG STEM Academy has brought back their Peer Mentor Program, which helps the ninth-grade students at the annex become familiar with the main building. They also organize a toy and coat drive, providing donated items to students in need, offering cheer during the holiday season. Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy recently performed the musical Grease, which was a fun and educational experience from students from all schools, giving them an insight into musical production. Jefferson Academy also participated in Operation Christmas Child, a project encouraging students to fill boxes with toys for children not only in Elizabeth but around the world. As we all know, the transition to high school can be challenging for many students, including myself. However, as I've grown older and built relationships with both staff and students, Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy has truly become my second home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and for allowing me to advocate for not only Hamilton, but for all high schools in Elizabeth. I am proud to represent such a vibrant and inspiring community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for, um, taking the time to represent our students in our district. So, we appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
All right, now, thank yous again. So, uh, I just wanna thank our directors. Um, I know it was a lot for you to come to the board meetings this year, um, for, so that, to allow board members to ask questions about the agenda, but I thank you for your willingness to do that throughout the year. We were able to ask you questions whenever we had some confusion about something, just to make it clear, and we were able to have dialogue back and forth, so we just appreciate your time and your effort. And as we, as you start or end the year, I hope that you and your family all have a wonderful year and a wonderful season. And I just thank you for all your time and all that you do for our district, so thank you. Just wanna thank our Assistant Superintendents and, uh, Ova's Right-Hand Girl. So, thank you for all that you do throughout our district as well, because our district runs under you and the schools. You know, you guys manage the, the different schools, although all, Ova tells you, you know, how to do everything, but you assist her along the way, so I just wanna take the time to say thank you to the three of you, as well as the thank you. I wanna also take some time to thank this side of, of the cabinet. Um, I, we cannot do what we do without HR, right? We can't continue with, uh, without, um, your work and your assistance, so I just wanna take the time to thank, uh, Mr. Questa for your assistance and your entire, um, staff. Um, we appreciate you, you know, so just know that you're appreciated, and we, uh, thank you for all that you do. I wanna take time to also thank, um, Heather and Rajiv and all that you do as well in helping us make sure that we're on the right track, um, on the things that we do in regards to the business office. And Mr. Kennedy and our new Mr. Pat, uh, we appreciate you, you were a lot of fun in the private sessions. Uh, I like to see a man as a secretary, so thank you so much for bringing some new life and direction into our, um, into the cabinet as well. And Mr. Kennedy, thank you for all that you do. Lastly, again, uh, our attorneys, our sex, our security guards, our police officers, thank you for coming every board meeting and assisting us. Um, and I, my teacher, this is my, uh, high school gym teacher, uh, thank you so much, Ms. G, for always coming and supporting us every single board meeting. It's not just me, because I'm the president, but she comes to all board meetings to make sure she knows what's going on. And I would be remiss if I did not thank the IT department for all that you've done, and you've given it up. I know a lot of times with the IT, I'm giving y'all some issues, we're going back and forth, arguing back and forth on mic, but I appreciate you. I appreciate you standing on your feet, um, while we're doing our board meetings. I appreciate you making sure that we're starting on time. I appreciate you just kinda going with the flow whenever I'm a little off. Um, I just wanna thank everyone for making this a year for me to remember. Um, I thank just the community members also for the back and forth, making me stronger. Um, I appreciate you. Um, and I just want to say that I hope everyone, um, just has a wonderful year and just have a beautiful smile on their face, no matter what you're doing. I just hope that you enjoy your time with your family, your friends, um, and that you just, um, are happy where you are in life. And if you're not, figure it out and, and do, and you know, and learn how to do something else and, and flip it around, okay? I have some cards that I, I wanted to give out, um, with a song. The song that I had, which is my Song of the Year is Have, I think it's called "Good Day", and, um, it inspires me, um, every day, so I just hope that if you, when you listen to it, that it can inspire you as well. So, at this time, the president requests a motion to go into private session to considers matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of legal matters, specifically workers' compensation, J- matters, specifically workers' compensation, J.C., O.D.L., M.M., and the H.I.B. appeal, and the R.B. versus Elizabeth Board of Education. Excuse me, the Elizabeth City Board of Education. Personnel matters, personnel report, Tab Two B. Field trip considerations, report, awards of contract, cybersecurity, and that's it. At, at the end, the board will reconvene in public and take formal action. May I have a motion to go into private session, please?
I make a motion to go into private session.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second to go into private session. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bathlis.
Yes, thank you. We are now in private session. Thank you.